I'm Alex Stone, former military service member and law enforcement officer. Now CEO of Echelon Protected Services, one of the fastest growing private security firms on the West Coast. And this is Ride Along. Where our guest and I witnessed firsthand the issues affecting our community. I believe our proven method of enacting meaningful change with compassion and understanding is the best way to make our streets a safer place and truly achieve security through the community.
My name is Jessie Burke and I am a small business owner in Portland, Oregon's Old Town neighborhood. And I am running for Multnomah County Commissioner for District Two. I'm here today to spend some time with my friends Alex and Bach and roam the streets and see who we can help in the neighborhood that we all spend so much time in.
Welcome back to the Ride Along. I'm Alex Stone, your host. Today's guest, a very good friend, Jessie Burke. Jessie, introduce yourself to the folks.
My name is Jessie Burke and I am a small business owner in Portland in the Old Town neighborhood.
Now Jessie's more than that. We'll get into that during the interview. Jessie, tell us a little bit about your background because you're not originally from Portland, right?
I'm not. I'm originally from Washington DC. I actually don't even know if I have told you this story, but it's my spiel that I give now. So when I was six, my father was paralyzed. And four years later, my sister was born with a severe birth defect. And my parents were just drowning in debt. And so they moved into my aunt's basement and my mother started cleaning houses for a living.
I did not know that.
I know.
Jessie and I have known each other for years.
Yeah, I like to withhold important personal stories.
Only until we're alive in front of those people.
And so my parents told us that we had to be good at something if we wanted to get out. And they put us in different sports. My brother was like a superstar athlete. So whatever he did, he would do well. His was soccer. He did very well. And mine was fencing. I was less athletic, but I think very strategic. And when I was about 12 years old, I won my first competition. And they said, what do you want to do with this? And this is in 1992, just for reference. I said, I want to go to the 96 Olympics. And they said, okay, well, you can't do that here. So you have to move to New York to do it. And I moved to upstate New York by myself when I was 12.
To an academy?
Sort of. It wasn't quite as popular as it is now. So it was the National Women's Training Center, but it was like a club. And I lived with a family there for a few years.
I know this is very popular in tennis.
Yeah.
This happens in tennis a lot.
And I think fencing is becoming more popular. So maybe it's getting more formalized. But I just lived with a family for a little while. That was not my family. And traveled all over the world for fencing. And I was on the national team from like 1994 until 2004. And I did three Olympic trials. I was on the world championship teams. I was an alternate at the 96 Olympics.
Good job.
I didn't make it, but they took me to Atlanta to train with them. I did eventually go to Penn State on a fencing scholarship, which is where I met my husband Jonathan. I decided to study teaching because I wanted to try and help as many kids sort of learn the system because my parents could never figure it out. I moved to Portland because Jonathan wanted to go west. He'd never been west of the Mississippi River. So we went to Portland. And I started teaching at an after school program at Roosevelt High School in North Portland, working with high risk kids. I became an education coordinator at the Native American Youth and Family Center. All of it, I was like, oh my God, like there's so much red tape to help these kids. So I thought maybe it was a policy change needed. So I went to get my masters in public administration. And ultimately I did an internship at Prosper Portland and a temp job at an investment banking firm. And I noticed at Prosper Portland, which is a government agency, that I thought everyone would go to be there for the greater good. And it just didn't seem like everyone, and I was probably naivety, but I thought everyone would have really pure intentions. And I felt like everyone was actually just like a stepping stone to the next job. And then the investment banking firm, the guys were nuts. They're like at work at 4:00 AM. They're drinking Pepto Bismol all day. And I was like, why do you guys do this? And they were like, for money and power. And I told my husband, I was like, I don't agree with that motive, but at least I could tell the truth. And I said, I think I need to go private sector because I can tell the truth and just help people because I want to help people. So I wrote a business plan for my first business, which was Posey's Bakery and Cafe in Kenton. And I opened a bakery because 20 years later, my parents were still living in my aunt's basement. And they still couldn't figure it out. And my mom had gone back to pastry school. And I said, I will open a bakery and you can work there, but you have to move here. So that's how I got into business.
Amazing. That's a very diverse background.
Typical business owner.
Yeah, very true. I'm a business owner and I can't believe I'm here either. Like we started nonprofit, public, military, law enforcement, now private sector. So you're in the private sector. When you moved to Portland, I'm assuming you just fell in love with Portland, right? I know I did when I moved here.
Yeah. Well, when did you move here?
2010.
I moved here in 2003. I think that it was, it hadn't quite reached its like, you know, being the darling of the New York Times yet. So it felt very much like there was no traffic when I moved here.
Kind of like an overgrown village.
Yeah. So it felt like a town. Like there actually weren't even international flights when I moved here. And I was, I had been traveling abroad like every other weekend. So I was feeling like a little, yeah, I was like, oh my gosh, where have we moved? But it grew into itself and it became much more accessible. Like if you wanted to start a business, it felt like, you know, you could access anyone you needed to. So I think once I started engaging more in, with the city and with the community, it was lovely. Yeah.
Do you still have that same feeling now?
I feel like I am entering a war zone every day.
When did that change for you? When did you feel that inside, that change?
I actually think it started a bit before the pandemic. It just got really bad during the pandemic. Because my first business was in a little neighborhood and it was, you know, like four blocks from my house. And this is in the city.
More of a suburban area.
Yeah.
Still inside the city, but in a true neighborhood.
Right, yeah. And then I remember we've always had, you know, it's, Old Town has always been a bit seedy. And I remember my husband left me once. We just bought the building, which had been abandoned since World War II. And he left me there by myself at night to change the locks. So I'm like, wow, you must really either trust my ability.
You were a fencer.
Yeah, you must really trust my ability. Yeah. Trust my ability to defend myself or you think it's safe. I'm not sure.
Did you have a sword with you? Is it called a sword?
It is, sort of. It's whatever. There are three weapons.
Do you carry one with you?
Coincidentally, I just talked to some schoolchildren about fencing. So I had it in my car, but not usually.
For educational purposes.
Right. So I will say like, starting business in Old Town, I think was when.
And Old Town is a, it's a historical area. It used to be Japanese town.
Well, Japan town, but it's the, it's the original downtown. So all the buildings are historic. That is where Portland's downtown started. And it was, this was a port town. And so there were all sailors coming in. And it's a long backstory, but essentially all the hotel, all the buildings that are here were almost all hotels run by gangsters to trick the sailors. Because it was hard to get sailors to go back onto the ships. So crimps would make a deal with the captain. I'll get them in debt and sell them back to you.
So an old Shanghai town.
That's right. Yes. That's what it is to be Shanghai. But our building was the Seamen's Friend Society. So it was like YMCA. So it doesn't have quite as many ghosts in it.
Oh, so interesting. And so you purchased this building. You're, you're a, in private business, right? And you choose probably the hardest area, right, in Portland. Why?
You know, Kenton had been that way too. And I, I was sure that, you know, my mom's side of the family is Chinese. It's Chinatown. I was like, it's bigger, but like same problems as Kenton had. So surely I can, you know, figure it out. I think the thing that I didn't take into account was that when social services own the land and there's such a density of it, it's hard to ever balance out. Like if you think of neighborhoods or cities as ecosystems, you need a mix of things. So I remember like, so I've been in business down there for 10 years. Like eight years ago, I testified to city council that we needed a better mix. We needed more office workers. We needed more residents that had disposable income.
In Old Town?
In Old Town, right. Which is like 68 blocks. But 50% of the land is owned by social service agencies. I made a map for everyone, just in case anyone needs it. So anyway, I think that that was something that I didn't account for.
And this, this type of, I would call it zoning or districting, right? When you, when you're, when you're forcing all of social services into a specific area, it seems as if historically those were put in minority neighborhoods.
Yes. So as this transition, so it was the original downtown and they actually had, Chinatown was a little further south where Pine Street Market is now. There's actually a plaque there. And Japan Town is where Old Town is. And then as they wanted to move downtown south, they kicked the Chinese community out and forced Japan Town and Chinatown to be together.
And then they interred the Japanese.
It's actually even worse. So at the time, the Japanese community owned a lot of land there. Our building was even owned by a Japanese family. And then they had the Chinese Exclusion Act. So the Chinese community couldn't.
The first immigration law in America.
Right. Then the Japanese community was interned. And they lifted the Chinese Exclusion Act the next month, just sort of furthering the rift between the Chinese and Japanese community. So the Chinese community bought a lot of the land that was owned by the Japanese community. And, but also it's the only place anyone was allowed to live.
And so, yeah, so you're coming into this area. You want to revitalize it. Obviously you still have that desire in your heart to help the downtrodden, right? That's your background. You're coming in, you see a vision for a neighborhood and you realize, you know, part of the vision for the neighborhood is we actually have to bring in more business to revitalize the area. And you go and testify about that. It's eight years later. How's that going?
Well, I'm not sure if anyone heard, but there was a pandemic. And that's, I think, where it got
sidetracked.
Worse than I could have imagined, actually. This was in the midst of, so we're out of business. Because during the pandemic, we lost 98% of our sales. So we closed because it was cheaper than staffing people for no customers. There aren't a lot of residents in Old Town. It was offices, social service agencies, and a lot of subsidized housing. Which, what that usually means is people don't feel like they have a right to speak up for their neighborhood because.
They're not emotionally invested.
They're not emotionally invested or that they don't, because of their socioeconomic circumstances, they don't feel they have permission.
So they like that agency? Because they don't have that tie, having paid for something and feeling that ownership.
Sort of. I think that there's something about struggle with your socioeconomic status and not believing that you're worthy of having a voice is part of it too. So we have no one saying anything. It's essentially this neighborhood is a free for all. And it's when you let me know that organized crime was coming. And you, because you guys are on the street all the time and filled me in with what you were hearing. I am actually who informed the police that this was happening. They didn't believe me for a long time. And then one day it just switched that like, oh yes, obviously. And I actually wrote an op ed about it.
That's right.
And the newspaper was really concerned. They said, can you have the police verify this? Because we've never heard this. And they gladly obliged and had their public information officer verify organized crime. So I think that was a real tipping point. And just to sort of the chaos that began to ensue, like we created a hostile work environment for any sort of enforcement.
The, the city. The city allowed that to occur.
The city government, the citizens, like, I mean, I literally stood outside of Deadstock Coffee with the owner of Deadstock Coffee, who is a middle aged black man who's been working in Old Town for longer than I have. And we were just speaking to two police officers, one black, one white. And a white customer walked out of his business and said, real nice fucking place to have a meeting, you pigs. And just totally unsolicited. And the parent in me, I was like, get back here. Why did you say that? You don't know these people. What did they do to you? But I see that no one checks each other. Everyone is afraid of calling people on their stuff and.
And that's really one of the central tenets that you're trying to bring to the light is that there, there might be a cultural shift that we think is possible can occur where people can say things and not feel to be, not, not have that. I think there's a false sense of fear, right?
I think there's a fear of conflict. And so we create, what is the term, false harmony, right? There's a book called The Five Dysfunctions of a Team that I, I sent a digital copy to all of our elected officials. I said, you guys have all five of these. Let me know if you'd like me to do a training. I'm happy to help. I did not get any phone calls about that. But that the five dysfunctions, and it's essentially how do you in a professional environment create a healthy team, which very much mirrors a sports team, right? So the dysfunctions are a lack of trust, a fear of conflict, a lack of commitment, which is whatever we decide in this room, when we leave, we're all selling it like it was our idea. Because if you don't, you cut the legs out from under it. The fourth is a lack of accountability and the fifth is inattention to results. So, so I think that as much as our city and county and just as a community, citizens need to take more ownership. That op ed I wrote, I was saying, we are fighting a literal turf war. And we need citizens to show up and fight with us and speak up. Because if we don't, we'll never reclaim the space as like a place where order exists, right? And you can't, you can't have anything without some semblance of order.
And do you feel that there is a groundswell? Is there something occurring in the private sector that is leading to this level of engagement? Do you see that happening?
Well, I think that when we all started to find that our regular systems weren't going to work, those became businesses, right? Private security, outreach. There are government agencies and nonprofits that are supposed to do it. And when they're not delivering, then people privatize it. I mean, you'll remember, we hired your company. And then there was like beef with law enforcement. And I was like, all right, we're all going to talk about this. And we all had a big meeting with all private security companies and police. And I was like, hey, I'm everyone's customer here right now. Why are you fighting? And at that point, this is what, 2020? That someone with Portland Police said, well, if they would stay in their lane, if private security would stay in their lane. And I said, well, you can't cover your own lane. That's why they exist right now. So the day you can cover all your lanes, we'll stop calling them. But here's the hierarchy of responses, right? We don't want to bother you unless it's really critical.
And I'd like to say something about that. Coming from prior law enforcement, there has always been a sense that there, you know, law enforcement is a union controlled industry. And I was a part of the union. I was a part of two different unions. And we want to protect those jobs, right? And there is a sense of animosity between law enforcement and security because they feel like we're coming in and doing their job. And you never really want that. So they kind of, it's, we're, it's almost as if security can be viewed as a scab, right? But we're really not. So our model's different and you know that. So even though security and law enforcement has the same, they have the shared goals. We achieve those goals in a different way. Law enforcement uses the power of the government, you know, in order to achieve those goals. And in that typically, they, it's like a feedback loop that says, people have broken crimes. We're going to go find those people, reform them or put them somewhere else to keep a group safe. That's the job of the criminal justice system. And the, in the security industry, we can't do any of that. And this, this is, part of the problem is a lot of people in law enforcement thought we wanted to do that. And I've had to go and explain our model. We are a civil rights action group. We're a civil rights protection group. When people hire security, they're hiring us to protect their church from attacks, to protect their synagogue from attacks, to protect an event or a politician or a news person or like a CNN reporter, somebody like this. We're constantly protecting the individual and group rights that people have from the constitution. That's, as a security company, you really thrive and do best when you stay there. And I think that if we can continue to have these conversations with law enforcement, they'll begin to see us in a different way. Hey, they don't want to be, they're not want to be cops. They're here to make sure that the most historically black church in Portland isn't attacked by a white supremacist group on Sundays.
I mean, I think a simpler way to explain it is, one is trying to prevent it. The other can only come if something's already happened, right? And I think that it's in my mind foolish to think, oh, you're scabs, right? We need like 1300 police officers.
Oh, yeah.
We have 800. You're guaranteed to have a government job. If you want to be a police officer, you've got to carve out in the budget, right? So I don't, I don't understand how that would be compared apples to apples in any way. It's not, it's not lightening the load of police, right?
No, it doesn't at all.
And I think that's part of why I thought the conflict was like, this isn't helpful. Like we're all wanting the same thing. We all want order from chaos. You cannot do anything without, like that's the social contract we all agreed to. We're all paying into this thing for predictability and we're not getting it. So is it because you're short-staffed? If it's because you're short-staffed, then we have to fill some gaps with some other ways of handling things until you think you can do this or more of society is like going to participate. But until then, this is the new normal. So.
And so you, you went on a campaign to get the community engaged, right, in a process.
Like the 90 Day Plan thing?
Yeah. And how, and how did that go? And where are we now? Why are you running for office? Well, I have a feeling you're running for office because some of those goals didn't get achieved along the way.
Well, so we had our first, you know, my first low point was the organized crime discussion. I'll tell you how I got to the 90 Day Plan. The second low point was, I think in 2021, my phone started ringing off the hook. And it was residents and businesses calling me at 11:00 PM. And they were like, hey, there were like 300 rounds that were just shot. And I was like, why are you calling me right now? You should be calling the police. And they were like, we don't know who's going to come. And I was like, this is too much pressure. Like I am a citizen, a mother of three children. Like I am just supposed to be running my business. I don't have a military. I don't have a police force. I don't even have a gun. Like I don't know what I'm supposed to do in that situation. And the next day I got the audio from my rooftop deck cameras. And it's super upsetting because it was a machine gun. So listening to it is jarring. And I think it just sort of added this layer of just like how traumatic this experience is becoming, like coming to work every day. And I, they started having these weekly calls with the mayor's office. And that call was like right after. So I get on Zoom and I, I didn't.
I attended those for a while.
Yeah. I didn't know my mic was on. And I let out this big sigh and they all kind of teased me. And they were like, that's a pretty big sigh, Jessie. Are you okay? And I'm not super emotional, but I burst into tears. And I was like, I'm not, is anyone here? There was a machine gun shootout last night and no one called the police. They all called me. And I was like, that is too much pressure. And they were like, oh, that didn't show up on the police blotter. And I'm like, I know, because no one called the police. The police were just here. So they drove up. But anyway, so what was, what came from that was a request to write a recovery plan for Old Town. And I was like, okay.
The 90 Day Plan.
The 90 Day Plan. I was like, you might regret it, but I'll write it. And once I wrote it in one of our first meetings, because they were like, oh, we think we could pull this off. And they were like, uh, okay, everyone on this call, which is like a hodgepodge of people. It's no one official. Like anyone can join these calls. They're like, I want you all to take this plan back to your groups and make sure they're okay with it. And I said, no, you asked Old Town to write this. We are the official representatives of Old Town. This is the plan. And they were like, uh, okay, next call. We might be a little delayed getting started. And I said, I think this is like my famous line for Portland Police. I said on the call, I'm the only person on this call not getting paid. Tell me why I don't go across the street right now, light my building on fire, take the insurance money and go literally anywhere else.
That would never really happen.
No, I would really. But I got some calls from different agencies after. And they were like, that was hilarious. And so they're like, okay, Jessie, we'll get started. And so once they said they would get started, I was like, I better make sure they really do this. So I scheduled a series of press conferences to announce to the world that the city of Portland committed to this. And we did get a lot done. I think that people, I joke that I'm pretty sure the mayor has it just pinned in his office. And even though the 90 days are past, he's like working his way through the list. Because things keep coming up to like get through the list. But with all of these, I really saw the city contorting itself to try and help cover things that are not their jurisdiction, right? So if the city is responsible for the health of the infrastructure, roads, lampposts, permits, water, and first responders, the county is responsible for the health of its citizens. So.
And I just want to add something. So around this time, there were probably 450 to 500 tents in Old Town, 68 blocks.
Yep.
68 blocks with around 500 tents. 10 to 50% of Portland's entire homeless population was living on the street in tents.
Yep.
In Old Town.
Or outside my door. Yeah.
Because there's a lot of people who watch this and who might have come to Old Town. They might be living in somewhere else. I want them to understand how, just how drastic this. And so on top of all that, there's a literally gang shootout with automatic fire. And then this, this leads into a 90 Day Plan. And where does that go and why are you running for office?
So ultimately, one of the things I asked for was an outreach team. Because I was like, why is no one doing outreach? And they created an outreach team and they started transporting people to shelters or just being in people's business. And we decreased the tent count to about 70. And so I think that that, just in this list, there were things that I was asking for. That would be county or city. And the city would try and invent programs so that they could meet the need, even though it was the county's responsibility. And the county would consistently ice me out and they ice everybody out. Or they would say that we were lying. Like there was an interview where I did a press conference talking about Blanche House not having a contract signed yet. I had just talked to the executive director that morning. I don't have a contract yet. And the money's going to expire in 30 days. And then the chair responds, well, she's lying. We have a contract. And I was like, schedule the next press conference. I'll tell you when it's signed. But like that type of behavior. And I was like, you're public servants. You don't have the luxury of treating the public like this. You are not paying attention to results and everyone else is. So ultimately.
We're living in the result.
That's right. Well, and I tell people, it's why I don't let elected officials in the building. They want to meet with me all the time. And I said, well, you're going to sit outside because I don't think you're a celebrity. I think you're a public servant and I want you to see how it's going. And consistently, they are scared to death. And I met with a couple. One, there was a naked woman like dancing this close to them the whole time. And I was like, so how can I tangibly help you help me with this? They didn't quite have an answer. Others, one who like works at the state level um in. A lot of the addiction work that we're struggling with. There was a fight the last ten minutes. First, I was asked, did you set this up? And I was like. How would I do that? Hire a bunch of drug dealers and addicts?
Can you sell extra drugs on my block today?
I'll tell you a funny story about that in a second. There's a fight the last ten minutes and people were high. And they said, is that fentanyl? And I said, do you not know the effects of the different drugs? When they're fighty and strong, that's meth. When they looked dead, that's fentanyl. And they wrote their notes down. And I was like, okay, no one's in this situation.
And the county has three hundred million dollars, right?
Well, they have.
Isn't that right?
Their total budget for everything is three point eight billion dollars.
Specifically for just homelessness and Multnomah County.
That's maybe the three hundred million.
Eighty-five percent of which is in this city of Portland. They have three hundred million dollars.
Every year, we get it every year.
Five thousand people.
Yeah, it's not a finite resource. It's a bond measure that we get every year. So, um. My, the commissioner in my district recently stepped down to run for Congress. Um, and. One of the existing commissioners, Sharon Meyer, reached out and asked me to run and. I think my feeling was, I'm already volunteering to like, like the plan I did, they took it to Central East Side. They're like, teach Central East Side how to do it. They took it to Saint John's. They're like, teach Saint John's how to do it. Like, they needed more lighting during the entertainment detail closure. To decrease shootings and they wouldn't give the money to the police. So I said, fine, give it to me. I'll buy the light towers. So I bought the light towers. I managed two million dollars of capital projects for the city over the last two years. As a neighborhood association, like, that's crazy. So I was like. Right, unpaid. So I'm like, at this point, I.
You're a free project manager. If anyone needs a free project manager out there.
Call me. My number is, just kidding. So, anyway, I just felt like. I, what my concern is, I don't think anyone has enough executive experience, right? Like, what what small business owner. Cannot deliver a product to their customer on time and use up all the money. Or not use any money, like, the budget swings are amazing and.
So let's move, let's fast forward and say you get elected. What are the top three things that you're going to try to achieve your first year?
Yep. Um, my first one is we need a central database of available shelter beds.
Why don't we have one now?
Great question. Uh, I don't know the answer, but I've told them, it's hotel software.
Exactly.
I can help you access anything you need.
We do it all the time. I travel all the time. You travel. Um, you they can book the number down. They you can book a bed down to the actual minute. As conferences book, those numbers will go up, they'll increase.
Well, what's interesting is, so if you use hotel software. And it feeds into a central API like a booking dot com, but you make your own, right? It's obviously not booking. You're looking for shelters. It would be. A s- a separate app. But actually, nowhere in the country has this. So you could sell it to other places. And someone has already received a grant for this. And part of it, I know you know the answer to this, but I'll ask your average viewer. Do you know how hard it is to get someone into shelter? You call three one one, they email you a list of all the shelters. Imagine you're not yourself. You have to imagine that you're struggling and you need shelter right now. No one plans on being homeless. So shelter is an emergency. Uh, then you have to call every single shelter. And someone from the joint office said, well, why is that a problem? And I said, remember how revolutionary the internet was cuz then we didn't have to use the phone book? That's why, like, imagine you just flew to Detroit, you didn't get a hotel room. Wifi in the whole city and cell service goes down and you need a hotel and you have to call every single hotel. That's what you're asking really vulnerable people to do.
People that are that have been high for five days.
Right. But then, that's not even the end of it. Let's say you do find a place, but most of them are reservation only. So there's a three, two to three week waiting list. No one plans on being homeless. You don't make reservations for a shelter bed. Then, once you do, you get registered at a central location that may not be where you are right now. And they give you a bus ticket to get there. That is too many steps for your average vulnerable citizen. And I've done it. My husband has done it. We have had zero success.
Every day.
And it's too hard. My husband always used to say you have to make it easy for people to make the best decision. And it's too hard right now. It's like, make it easy to find, make it easy to reserve, and then get a taxi to pick them up.
Yeah, taxis.
I don't understand why this is complicated. Like, you know, in Old Town, we have a taxi service that we pay for, right? It's okay. I don't mind that groups in Old Town use it.
We actually took that model and made all the other neighborhood associations get their own account.
Well, the county started using our code.
Oh, it's good. I didn't know that.
And that is the day I lost my mind, where I was like, you have.
See, folks, folks. Jesse Burke is running for county commission in Multnomah County. We can't let, we can't, this is out of control now. They're they're putting the burden. They have three hundred million dollars a year and they're putting the burden.
On neighborhoods? Okay, I have to tell you the last two. The last two are that we need to drastically increase the number of walk-in shelters. You saw during the cold weather. Everyone found walk-in shelters, right? But you can, we're not never gonna be successful if it's always low or no barrier. And it's not that you don't wanna meet people where they're at. You'll never get anyone to work there. Right? So people don't always know low and no barriers. You can still be using, you can have weapons, you can have pets. It's, I had a night audit that worked for me. I'm totally giving myself away here, but I had a night audit that. Was assaulted three times at his nonprofit job before he left. And it's like, you have to bear in mind all of the players involved. So we need to drastically increase that model, but. Increase the the standards and expectations. And the last one is we have to get sobering centers. Everything I'm doing is like, what can I do immediately? Because we cannot normalize this. You cannot normalize that being chased down the street by someone with a machete that's high-end meth. Is normal. Like, my sixteen-year-old was almost assaulted by someone high on meth until an adult stepped in between them. And you cannot normalize people being passed out on the sidewalk because from fentanyl. Cuz they're the ones getting sexually assaulted or trafficked. And so take, it's not jail, it's taking them to sober up. Just like the Cheers van that used to be here when the drug of choice was alcohol is. We need to modify the system to at least create some predictability in our community because. Right now, it's like, you like I said, you feel like you're entering an unpredictable war zone and. We'll never get get to a place of stability if we can't. If we can't at least have that as baseline. What is Maslow's hierarchy of needs? Like, safety is the bottom one?
It is. Safety does come first. If people aren't safe, they'll never transition to the higher level. So you're running for office. Let the people know exactly where they can find you online.
Yes, so I'm running. I'm running for Multnomah County Commissioner for District Two, which is north and northeast Portland. So that's the only district that can vote for me. Um, those boundaries are north of I eighty-four. And south of the Columbia River, Saint John's to northeast one hundred forty-eighth. Um, my website is jesseburke dot com, spelled J E S S I E B U R K E dot com. And uh, social media is Jesse for N O Po. North Portland people know.
Jesse, thank you for coming on today. Um, everyone knows this is a ride-along. We talk about stuff in studio, but then we actually go out and get things done on the street. Because that's what we need to do. We need more engagement. So we're gonna go hit the street right now. We're gonna catch up with Michael Bach, our favorite security guard, America's security guard. That's what I like to call him. And we're gonna go meet up with Bach on the street and we're gonna go see if we can make a difference today. You ready? All right, let's hit it.
Yeah, who else do you think will?
I don't know. Eric Zimmerman? I've known Eric for a long time. I I knew him when I was on the board of the F O P.
He's running against Sharon, too.
Yeah, he's been a great guy. So Bach should be around here somewhere. Bach. Okay, this is America's security guard.
I was gonna say.
America's security guard right here.
Are you America's security guard?
Don't embarrass me.
I hope that they're on right now.
You ready to ride?
How you doing, Jesse?
I'm great.
Good, good to have you.
Thank you.
So we're here riding along, we're on patrol, right? We like to patrol in different types of vehicles. So we're in the Sprinter van today. And uh, we're gonna be heading to the pit. So tell us your history with the pit that you have with this area.
So the pit is located underneath the Steel Bridge and. We, in twenty twenty one, on those mayor's office calls, the N W E A. So Northwest Education Association, which is right next to the pit, got on the call and said they were having issues with their windows being shot out from the pit.
That's right.
And uh, we had just discovered old plans, like architectural drawings. Of a skate park in our folder, in our files for the Old Town Community Association. And the question posed was, does anyone have any suggestions on how to deal with gunshots? Coming from the pit. And I said, well, what if we build the Silver Skate Park? Which was slated, the idea started twenty-five years ago with Howard Weiner, um, who owns Cal Skate. And they got some initial funding for proof of concept and design. Um, but that's as far as it ever went. So we kept pushing and pushing for this. I mean, I think I might have even put it in the ninety day plan. And with a coalition of uh, skate advocates. And our organization, the Old Town Community Association, um, our willingness to project manage it ourselves. Um, and this unique thing that someone shared with me actually from Prosper Portland that, cuz the question was, where would the money come from? It's about a fifteen million dollar project. And the. The, I don't know if you know what system development charges are. But when you develop a property.
Sounds horrible, though.
When you develop a property in a neighborhood in Portland, you have to pay. It's called an S D C or system development charges. And they're like tens of thousands of dollars.
Is that for infrastructure?
It's, it goes into the pot of money for Water Bureau, Parks Bureau, all of the bureaus. And the way the parks' S D Cs work. Is that they can only be used to build new parks. In the district, it was collected.
So that money is channeled to Old Town.
Right, except we never really knew that that worked that way. Until someone from Prosper Portland told us. And so we started advocating for it in that way. And Commissioner Dan Ryan approved it and directed the money to to build fifteen million dollars to build the Silver Skate Park.
When when is that money gonna be released?
It has been released. The project will be presumably managed by the Parks Department.
That's great. A lot of traffic going on here.
Maybe something at the pit.
All right, we're uh, here at the pit. Let's go ahead and jump out. Do a little walkabout and uh, you can tell us exactly what's going on down here cuz you're the queen of Old Town, right? Dude, the medical examiner, the medical examiner is out here. Yeah, so we're coming down to the pit here, obviously. Uh, we got some, you know, emergency lights going on, a couple parked vehicles. The medical examiner is here, so likely an overdose. Could could be something different, but likely an overdose.
I don't think it's an overdose with as much attention.
I would imagine that you're correct. I'd imagine it's.
Overdose gets next to no attention. This is probably violence.
Our people who have watched have have seen us here before. There were over almost about a hundred tents here at one point. We we were able to clear it. And as you can tell, you know, the the fencing's come down. And we have tents that are beginning to populate, yeah, pop up underneath the uh, the overpass here. So we're back here in the pit, right? And uh, gosh, it was clear for maybe two or three months. We got a lot of people moving back in. Uh, do you feel like this is a project that you can accomplish if you get elected?
Well, I'm not sure if it becomes a county project. I think that it's. Will we have adequate shelter? Will we have adequate access to shelter and outreach?
Do you think the county can put resources into getting these people into shelters rather than living in tents here in the in this area?
Yes, I think that what what we need to do is require, if we're going to fund nonprofits to do outreach. And take it out of the county. We have to have measurable deliverables. Right now, we don't tie anything to measurable outcomes. So, um, then what are we doing?
I mean, we're here today, as we drove over here, we we were kinda talking about the the gunfire. Uh, that you can even see the broken windows that were never replaced here in that building.
That's a separate building.
Separate building. That's my client. This building, and I believe also this building has experienced gunfire before. And now we have a major crime scene going on. We have the coroner's office. We have multiple detectives' vehicles. I mean, with with a with a a police force of half of what it should be. We have a major criminal investigation going on in the very park where we want a skate park. I mean, do you feel confident that the city and county can do what is necessary to make this safe for kids to come and skate?
Uh, from what I've learned, uh, skaters, you know, self-manage. They like, they're protective of their skate parks and they're places that they're allowed to skate. I didn't know, but. In the nineties and before, it was made illegal to skateboard in Portland. Yeah, so this is like a big shift. When Howard Weiner was starting this, he was like, no, you don't understand, like. These kids, like, they should have a space. He was a skater for years and it was illegal. And so to give people, to utilize these spaces that are being utilized for other things and making them usable by more people. I do think can, we're making it. And the the design is actually really interesting. It's not just for skaters. It's allowing people to have spectator areas. So that other community members can participate in it. So I do think that. This is a really innovative way to use sort of unusable space.
Well, this is really just one spot in the Portland metro area. Yes, it is close to home for all of us. But it is an area that is frequently frequently encamped and frequently cleared. But. Again, this is the kind of thing that's going on all over the place. And the biggest problem that I see happening is the lack of shelter space. With which to transition people, shall we say, up and out and and in a place where they're not only more to more stable but safe environment. So what's the next step for people who are in this environment when there aren't? Cuz I can't snap my fingers and have a shelter. How do we get a shelter? How do we get more shelter space? How do we get more coordination and community involvement? In order to get people out here who are hurting desperately, albeit from whatever, you know, either a crippling addiction or just, you know. The the economic pressure of being out here. How do we get them the help they need?
Okay, um, I think that we actually could have enough space for our current population. If we did things like, like, you know, all the warming shelters. So those were all churches and schools that weren't used, being used, opening up their doors. We have kind of a weird rule right now with the county where they won't let money go towards religious-based nonprofits. But they're ready to help and we're obviously not at capacity. I mean, we're at capacity for what is. Not religiously affiliated, but I'm not sure that's the best way to draw the line. So if we could get all of these places that have served as warming shelters and they've reached out, they're like, we're ready. Let us help. Um, I mean, even Blanche House. Blanche House gets no funding from anywhere because they're religiously affiliated. This is more like an all-hands-on-deck situation. The governor said we need to build thirty-six units of housing in here. It is not possible for the nonprofit sector to build thirty-six thousand units of housing. If you want thirty-six thousand units, you need nonprofit and private sector building.
Working together.
Working together, building. One of the things I talked about was, I talked to someone who was responsible for finding locations for shelter. And I said, have you ever considered acquisition? I said, I just looked on LoopNet today, which is a commercial real estate site, which doesn't even list all of them. I said, there are three thousand. Units available in all of the empty buildings. Like, they're empty buildings right now. You could buy them. And it would. Three thousand units would cost, I think it was something like twenty million dollars, equivalent to two hundred thousand dollars or something. A unit. We're currently building at five hundred thousand dollars.
Way under.
And they said, acquisition is nowhere in our plan. And I was like, well, you should. That would be a good idea. It's cheaper. It's already ready. But, and private sector is ready. Like, we've talked about it and they're like, we'll build it. If I had a guaranteed buyer, I could build affordable housing all day long.
And so these are things that can change by a simple vote, majority vote at the uh, county commission level?
I believe so. Part of the issue is, so there are the board rules and how you write the budget. But executive powers of the chair, if you Google executive powers, Multnomah County, which is a link. It goes to a blank page.
Interesting.
Wow.
Yeah, it's a little amateurish, but.
So I'm interested in making contact with some folks.
Me too.
I want to walk down here and see if they need any help. You got a fucking doing that?
I'm good.
There's usually six, they pull six times usually?
Oh, we just got money to do a quiet zone. That's gonna end.
Oh, that, really?
Yeah, so we got money to put up the gates.
Yeah, that's awesome. Just wait up here, we'll get, we'll get permission, okay? All right.
Good. You doing okay down here? Yeah? We're down here just talking to people. We're kind of filming a podcast. Are you cool with just saying hello? Luis? Luis Michael?
Awesome, Alex.
Alex.
What's up, bro?
I'm Jesse.
This is Jesse.
Yeah, it's okay.
That's all right. Yeah. So where are you from?
Mexico.
Mexico, awesome, bro. So you're from Mexico originally, you're living in America? You ended up under this bridge in downtown Portland, right? This is Jesse Burke, Jesse's running for county commission. I think she's gonna win, right?
We'll see.
We want to implement programs that can help you get into housing. What do you need? And how can we help you?
Well, I lost all my documents.
You've lost all your documents?
Yeah, I guess that's all I need. I mean, just like some money to get my documents back.
We can sponsor you to get a driver license.
Yeah.
I don't know about that. Oregon DMV is what I was talking about.
Do you know where, I think anyone can get a license. You don't need to be documented to get a license.
You have, yeah, I'm talking about for free though, because Loa can sponsor him to get all those fees taken care of.
But he doesn't have the documents to get the license.
Yeah, you don't have the documents.
Do you know where the Mexican consulate is? But he needs help getting like your passport and your, your work visa or something? Yeah.
When's the last time you've been to the consulate?
Where?
The Mexican consulate.
Four years ago.
Four years ago?
About seven or eight years ago.
Okay, so you've been living here for seven or eight years?
Yeah.
You need to get to the consulate because you need your documents. How did you lose them? How did you lose your documents?
Fired.
Fired, oh my gosh, I'm sorry.
It's terrible, bro.
Horrible. So you're in Portland now. Other than your documents, we know that you need documents. But if you could get into housing or if you could get into some type of transition living, would you do that?
I don't know, I don't have a place for it.
No place?
Yeah, just actually leave my documents somewhere to live, you know, like to recover myself.
When's the last time someone's contacted you and offered to get you into a shelter?
Last week, I guess.
Last week? Was it here or? Here? And you did, what were they offering you?
Like a shelter, shelter, huh?
And you said no, obviously because you're still here? Why did you say no?
Well, like, I guess too many people around, you know, all of them are homeless and it's kind of uncomfortable.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it can be crowded. It can be crowded, okay.
And it feels unsafe.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna call someone from Loa to come contact you.
Okay.
Piece of cake.
Yeah, and they're gonna come, they're gonna offer you to get you a ride to the consulate. Once you get to the consulate, do you know what you need in order to get your documents? Is there any items or things that you need? Once you get there, how do you get your paperwork?
I have to call, ask for a.
Like a birth certificate?
Yeah. And then we give you an interview.
Yeah, like, I think that, I've done it for people that were born here but didn't have a birth certificate, that you, you can order it online here. I don't know in Mexico how easy it is, but they'll mail it to you. And you actually don't have to have your driver's license necessarily. And then usually, is it like social security card? And I don't know what it is, but to get whatever other documents are necessary. Did you get a work visa?
No.
No? Do you work right now?
No.
Yeah.
I have a document.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, let's do it, we can make a phone call.
We'll make a phone call. Yeah.
Yeah, buddy of mine, it'd be Spencer or Terrence.
Really, really big guy?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Come by, say hello, and then see if we can't help you get you squared away.
Here, I'm gonna be upstairs.
Where's, just up around the corner over here?
Over here.
Oh, over here, okay.
Luis?
Yep.
Pleasure to meet you.
Good to meet you, buddy.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, good luck.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is this your tent as well, here and there? Are they home? Do you know if they're home? No, okay. So, you know, this is the situation we find ourselves in. Where, I'm like, everyone's situation is unique. That's why we always talk about, we can have programs and have programs in place. But each situation is unique, has to be tailored for that person's.
Totally.
Obviously, this guy needs to be documented. Or he's gonna stay homeless.
Well, from what I understand, like, loss of documents, even stolen documents, is like one of the main reasons.
It's the main request.
Yeah.
Usually when we contact someone, it's three things, right? I need food, I need my, I need an ID, I need documents, right? Or they want a ride somewhere else. But yeah, documents is always one of the top three. One of the ideas that we both entertained, and it was with an individual that was currently working for the city government. And, and we were asked in a meeting, and actually it was at your business. And they asked, or this individual asked, what do we need to do? And I said, you need mobilized Sprinter vans. And those Sprinter vans have to do three things. Number one, they have to be able to give people IDs. You gotta have the power of the state to actually print and make an ID for the person at the van, right? So you need to be able to verify who they are, right? And to do that. Number two, you have to be able to provide them assistance with food, water, clothing, these types of things. And the third thing is, you need to be able to coordinate in order to get them into a shelter or housing or transition them back to a care situation with family or friends or a faith group, three F's, right? And, and you can do it with Radio Cab or a taxi service, right? So that is, I think, one of the ways we solve the problem is, rather than forcing people to come out here and then having to figure out how he can get an appointment at the Mexican consulate downtown, why not just have mobilized vans that come out and meet people where they are? Document who they are, verify them in a system. If they ever lose their ID, that person can see that van, they can get their thumbprint and face, and they can print them a new ID right then and there.
That's a good idea.
So if we had mobilized ID services, it could be a lower level ID, even a TPI card, something like this. It could be a government ID.
But I wonder if your fingerprints giving you the verification of your identity to allow you to get your birth certificate, to get your social security.
You should be able to do that, yeah.
That's interesting.
Yeah. What, what?
That's the word.
Yeah, City Rep. City Rep is at its 4:45 on a Friday.
Yeah, yeah.
So really, best bet for him.
Monday.
Is Monday morning at the Lower Resource Center, where he can hook up with Spencer. I got his permission, texted Spencer a picture of him, explained the situation. So we'll coordinate getting him over there, likely Monday morning, Radio Cab or some other.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Easy to do this, and we operate on $25,000 a month budget. We, we get 150 people into shelter a month. We have three employees. You know, we could do more of this.
Yeah.
Right, we just need the right programs in place.
Well, I think even the shelter operation, someone from the county just texted me that they have a 26% success rate. And I said, does that mean 26% of people that enter shelter successfully transitioned to housing? He said, yes.
26%?
It used to be 80, so.
That has to do probably with cleanliness, with violence, with.
It's the operation.
Well, and you're, and for, and because we have, we don't have housing readily available, people are sometimes on a housing waitlist for six months.
I mean, that's, to me, that is low hanging fruit. I know Section 8 isn't perfect, but we can make our own Section 8 vouchers.
All day.
Right, so like, if we've got housing dollars, why can't we? If we have housing dollars, why would we not be able to use it to get vouchers for empty apartments? Like, we have tons of empty apartments, just no one can afford it. So, anyway, it's, it just feels like a lack of creative thinking, so.
You know, I, I've said this before, like, love is the devotion to the well-being of others, regard, without regard to the cost or the other person's response.
Yeah.
So I'm either running into a burning building to save them, or I'm giving resources, or I'm disciplining my child because I want better behavior out of them. My devotion to their well-being is worth the cost because they benefit from it. And when I look around here by that definition, we could use a little bit of love. Yeah, reaching out to your fellow man.
Yeah.
So we just looked on the phone, and it appears that a death did occur. A murder, some type of stabbing, I believe, which would make sense. This is why there is a mobile incident command vehicle, a coroner and detective's vehicles all on site here. You know, I don't want to say it's serendipitous, but in a way it is that we just happen to be talking specifically about this side. And how, for me, the reason I brought it up, this side is, it's indicative of kind of a microcosm of all of Old Town. If we can transform this area right here from the Tom McCall Water Park to the railroad tracks and this, what will be a skate park, if we can transform that tiny little area, we can transform all of Old Town and the city. If we can do it right here. And we're talking about doing that, and then we show up today and there's a murder.
Yeah.
And so what's going on, what do you, what's going on in your mind with all that?
You know, I was thinking about what you were telling me earlier about sort of the escalation, right? Like, you have to start with petty crime and, and then it goes, if no one does anything about that, then people start doing this. And, and it makes me think a lot about, you know, we had this movement and elected a different district attorney who committed to, I mean, it's like all over their social media, committed to not prosecuting minor crimes.
Yeah.
And then by the numbers, misdemeanors, which I think people think like misdemeanor, not serious, felony, serious, that we prosecuted 2,000 misdemeanors last year. And that's not that many, right? And I was like, does everyone feel better? Do we feel safer than before?
And so to be clear, the city of Portland does not have its own court or its own jail. So the county, the district court, or the county of Multnomah's district court handles all violations, so all tickets. So if you get pulled over, you get a ticket. All misdemeanors and also all felonies. So in most situations, the district court is almost always just doing felonies, right? And so the court system's already gonna be overloaded. And we have, what, 30 or 40 less DAs than we did just a decade ago?
Right.
Right? And so in a city with half a million people.
More than that.
And a county, how many are in the county? Maybe 700,000?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what Gresham's population is, but Portland's 650,000.
I would imagine there were tens of thousands of misdemeanors that occurred last year.
Yeah.
And we only prosecuted 2,000.
I mean, the reference point I give people is at, at our peak in like the last 10 years, we prosecuted 10,000, or we issued 10,000 cases. Sorry, sorry, 20,000. This is before this time.
20,000 criminal citations for misdemeanor.
In the last 10 years, right? Last year, we did less than six, less than 6,000. We did like 5,500. And.
So a quarter.
Right, and it's like, is it safer?
I probably witnessed a quarter of those myself.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, really, like, this is insane.
Well, even the, the courts, like, I can't remember if it was the community court or step court, like, we used to see thousands of cases a year.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They did 200. They did a 95% drop in those. And this is like directed by the leader of the justice system, right? And so it's like, but my point is, we're so focused on, in Portland, like, the root of how someone becomes a criminal. Like, how do we fix those root problems? And I'm like, great, we can worry about that. But we also, where the rubber meets the road, have to care about the victims of these crimes also. So perhaps in a think tank, we worry about the root of the root. But where the rubber meets the road, we have to be knowing the escalation of crime, right? It starts with small stuff. Even like I told you earlier, studies show you just need 5% of the population to not follow the rules for there to be chaos. Because there's just not enough law enforcement for that. I would guess we're at at least 5% not following the rules. We've got the people living outside and then people that are just generally like, forget it.
Well, 1%, 1% of our population is homeless.
Right.
So that alone right there is a contingency of people who either can't, because of addiction or mental health issues, can't follow the rules or are not following the rules for some other reason.
Right.
Right? And that's, that take, that's 20% there, that 5%.
Right, so it's like, this thing that I, when people talk to the, this is in a different race, but like, they talk to district attorney candidates, like, what's your vision? I'm like, I hope your vision is predictability. We should be able to leave our buildings and predict both our environment, our built environment, and how people interface. But also if something does unexpectedly happen, the justice system and cycle is predictable. They will be arrested, they will be held, they will show up to court, they will be held accountable for their crimes. Right now, we have none of those four things that we can count on.
Yeah.
So what do we do to, and that's, that is what makes people feel zero confidence. People are scared, and so then you have Maslow's hierarchy of needs. We are not covering safety. Safety requires some form of predictability. And we have created a completely unpredictable environment.
Yeah.
Because we did not care about everything we know about the things that, that layer on top of each other to create chaos.
Yeah.
So.
With predictability comes emotional investment. And I, I've said this before, but as humans, we have to invest in emotional space. Space becomes a motive for us. We get a sense of ownership. All, all these things are very emotional. And if, if there is no predictability, people will no longer invest emotionally in space. And then financial investment will follow. That lack of investment, and then you have an urban death spiral.
Well, predictability is even helpful for people breaking the law.
Yeah, it is.
There's a, I can't remember what the theory is called, but I think it's like the criminal justice theory or something, that the way you mitigate crime is the certainty of getting caught, the swiftness of the consequences and the severity of the consequences. There is no certainty of getting caught currently. We're not even gonna get to the consequences part. There's no certainty that you're gonna get caught.
Yeah, you have 20, 25 minute response times.
But if you had certainty, you probably wouldn't do it. If you were certain that someone's gonna be like, hey, you can't live out here, do you need some help? Where do you want to go? You wouldn't live out here because you knew someone was gonna bother you.
Yeah.
So the lack of predictability has created this chaos.
Yeah.
So how do we, how do we create order? How do we create predictability?
You're running for office, you tell me, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. That's gonna be your job.
I tell people all the time, it's a team sport to save a city or a county or a state. So I do think we need different people in these different roles that you can't have. I'm always surprised at like people fighting with each other. And people know it, like, I, I interviewed with some of the employees of Multnomah County and they were like, the leadership needs to stop fighting.
Yeah.
And I told them, I've said to the county and the city, elected officials are the parents of a city or a county or a state, and how you treat each other is how you tell the populace they can treat each other. It's parenting. And I don't want to sound condescending, it's just, that's, leadership is exactly like parenting.
As a parent, I agree.
As a parent, I'm just gonna tell you.
Kids too, and if I'm not showing all of them love to help them live better lives, man, I mean, I'm effectively being a bad father. I'm not showing them love.
That.
You gotta provide for them, you gotta be a mentor, you gotta be a friend.
Help them grow.
You got, you gotta play all those roles as a parent.
And to have boundaries and to have standards, what you expect of them, what you don't expect of them, that like, right now, it's just a free fall.
Yeah.
And that's why it looks like this, like we, and it's all for fear of judgment. I tell people, judgment is discernment. I can discern that this isn't okay.
Yeah.
And if someone, like, normalizing addiction drives me crazy. I was like, if someone was an alcoholic, you wouldn't be like, awesome, keep going.
Yeah.
You'd be like, how can I help you? Like, is it better for me to not drink around you? Like, what would be the most supportive? What we do now, it's like, awesome, keep going.
Yeah.
And if you overdose, um, we'll come bring you back to life and then you're gonna go do it again. Rather than being like, no, now you have to go into treatment.
What's best for their well-being.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's like.
Behaving in a manner that is best for their well-being.
You cannot make good decisions.
Yeah.
When you're in the, in this mind.
Well, it's common, everybody thinks that, everybody knows that. And it just is, now it's gonna take some people who are strong enough to be able to stand up and say, look, I love you enough to help you into an environment that will ultimately produce growth and change in your life for the better.
We need street level interventions.
Absolutely.
And that's what we do every day, we do interventions.
Totally, but I think that you're right, this idea of like, people fear judgment because they're selfish, right? They're like thinking about themselves and how they look to everyone else. I tell everyone, I don't need a job, I have a job. Someone needs to do it, someone needs to say it. Like, someone needs to be the parent that is like, no, I do care about, like, I lost a brother-in-law to an overdose.
Wow.
I don't want people dying outside, I want everyone to have what they need.
Yeah.
And the fact that this is how we take care of people is mind boggling to me.
Let's see if we can offer some cigarettes and get them.
Yeah, no doubt.
I wanna go say hi.
Yeah.
Hey sweetheart, you want a cigarette? You want a cigarette? How you doing, honey?
You gotta carry cigarettes.
I'm Michael.
If you're gonna do outreach.
Yeah.
You gotta offer cigarettes.
You doing okay?
Yeah.
You need any help with anything? Okay, it looks like you got some money taped to your wrist, don't lose that. Okay. Are you doing okay? Do you need some help getting into a shelter?
Pedestrian or.
Do you know, do you have a safe place to stay? You do? Okay, I'm Michael, what was your name? Selena, wonderful to meet you. Well, if you need additional resources, you know where to get to the Lower Resource Center? It's on First and Cooch, okay? And you know Blanche House is right here, okay, honey? Okay, Selena, good to meet you, okay?
Thank you.
You bet.
Jesse Burke, you came on the ride along today, we sat in studio, we talked about all the problems with Portland. We talked about this hopeful plan, uh, for the city, specifically this area, a microcosm of not only Old Town but of Portland itself. We come down here to talk about this plan and we encounter a murder, we encounter a stabbing, uh, possible multiple victims. What's gonna happen? If you don't get elected, I mean, should anyone stay in Portland? I don't, I, I feel the same way Bach does. I, we need you to win. The city needs you.
Well, in the spirit of positivity, which is literally the name of my pack, uh, it's Jesse Burke's positivity pack. It's what I tell my kids, who knows what's gonna happen, um, but we just have to do the next right thing. So. I don't know, I, we all have a lot at stake. There was a, someone told me recently, there's a New York Times article that said cities are saved by people with too much to lose. And I think we all have a lot to lose, which is why we're all fighting so hard.
Jesse Burke, Too Much To Lose. County Commissioner.
Don't try, don't try my hat, no.
I love it.
Well, the chips are down for all of us.
Yeah.
I mean, we got a lot riding on this. This is our livelihood, this is not only that, but it's the, the life of the community.
Yeah, I, I wanna really, I'd like to end this ride along episode with the story about your daughter and what, how she testified.
Yeah, so my sixteen-year-old daughter, um, was asked to testify by TRIMED, uh, our public transit authority. Because they were trying to add, uh, you know, we're modifying measure one-ten, but they weren't sure if it would pass. So they wanted to have a TRIMED bill that would make it illegal to use illicit drugs on transit or at transit stops. Which I was like, you can't even use, have open containers, why would you be allowed to have illicit drugs? But whatever. And my sixteen-year-old had been nearly assaulted by someone high on meth until a teacher stepped between them. And then another ride, someone had, um, started openly smoking meth on the train. So she was asked to testify to committee and she said, you know, I took the day off school to come down and tell you this. And she shared about the meth, she shared about the fentanyl. And at the end, she said, we're children and we expect the adults in charge to protect us. And if you can't do that, why are you in charge? And the room was silent and they felt terrible. And they said, we had a lot of testimony, but they only spoke to her and they said, thank you for taking the day off of school. I'm so sorry. And it passed five-zero out of committee, so.
Well, we are ready for the adult, you, Jesse Burke, to be in charge of Multnomah County. And we're going, we're not only supporting you, uh, we're going to go out and, I'm gonna campaign for you.
Thank you.
And so, you know, I think, I think we're wrapped for today. Uh, I don't think we're gonna be able to get a P I O or anyone to talk to us from the scene, but, you know, it's been a good day. Unfortunately, you know, this is still Portland, we're, we're still working on it, we're fixing it.
Yeah.
And you're gonna be that solution.
Excited for you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Excited for everything.
Well, hopefully we have a good team in there. We have a, a good slate of candidates. Man, this looks great.
It does, yeah.
It does look great.
It does look great.
Especially in areas where there's not too much traffic, they don't get that dirty.
This was your project, right? Right back here?
One, uh, so that was part of our ARPA grant and we would get, uh, we're still doing it, we're in process.
Cause we need it to be livable, so that's a part of keeping things clean.
Right, so that, the tree wells, they're gonna have, uh, gates, pays for accordion gates for small businesses